Okay.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament? Mayor Heinens. And just so everybody knows, we do have somebody on the conference line, so it'll have to be a roll call for every vote. Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Okay. We are looking at the minutes from eight to the third. Twenty twenty one briefing meeting. And then two seven twenty one break with meeting. Motion and second to approve both of those.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Our next item on the agenda is proof of claims. Questions on any of those?
Proof to approve.
Motion to approve and second all papers.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
The motion has passed. And next, get set calendar. A is plot of track one, Brandon Golf Course addition. B is plot of track eight, Madison Sedition. C is plot of our three, this is plot of state. And plot of our five, six. Tollgrass addition. Are there any questions on any of those? A motion and a second to approve the, uh, those consent calendar items?
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Okay, well, the motion passes. Next, we are, we are, uh, public comments, uh, those people wanting to address the council as to any item, not on the agenda, who have not otherwise been asked to speak, uh, would, would have limited to five minutes. No action will be taken, the city reserves the right to end public comment after forty-five minutes. Do we have any public comments tonight? If so, can approach the, uh, podium? Okay. Next, we have a public hearing, rezone track one, Brandon Golf Course addition, from Natural Resources Conservation District to Institutional District, first reading of ordinance six thirty-three. Brian?
Uh, this is the ongoing process where we're trying to get all of the city-owned properties rezoned into the institutional zone. It allows, um, some different uses that would necessarily be permitted. For instance, uh, you know, on a, on a normal residential lot, you get one principal structure and one accessory structure. Well, the school has numerous accessory structures, so when they would rezone institutional, all of that would be permitted instead of a non-conforming use.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezone. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion, well, sorry, sorry, Jack, motion carries. Okay, old business, second reading of ordinance number six thirty-eight, temporary ordinance regarding the issuance of local medical cannabis establishment permits and/or licenses.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve this second reading. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion carries. B, second reading of ordinance six thirty-one, amending chapter fifteen fourteen-three, additional use regulations off street parking. Any comments on that, Brian?
No, no, it's, it just allows driving to the allowed parking spaces in setbacks.
Move to approve. Motion and a second to approve ordinance number six thirty-one, roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion carries. C, second reading of ordinance six thirty-two to rezone track three, Heartland Edition, from NRC to GB, General Business, and R two, Medium Density Residential.
Uh, this, uh, the three parcels north of Meadowbrook Trail would be zoned, rezoned from NRC to General Business, which is consistent with our comp plan, um, with general business around Holly. And then the lot four, which is south of Meadowbrook Trail, would be rezoned R two for the loud, to allow the construction of four plexes.
Move to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve, uh, item C, second reading of ordinance six thirty-two. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion carries. Standing committee reports. Golf course, Andrew.
Okay, we got, um, I think we got five bids back, um, we're looking at getting a, replacing our AC heating unit for the upstairs of the clubhouse. Uh, we were really hoping we could get it through this year and get it in the budget for next year, but it has become a big issue for us. Um, Saturday, we had a wedding, we had to do an emergency call, it wasn't working, it was eighty-eight degrees in the room, and it was a nice day outside. So, that's kind of what we're dealing with, the lowest bid we got, um, was from Prairie Suns for twenty-seven thousand nine seventy-five. Um, some of those bids have the, also the ten-ton unit, that's what serves the downstairs, that unit's working fine. Um, so we're just looking at the twenty-ton unit bids. Um, and we would really like to get moving this on, on this as fast as possible, it's about an eight to twelve week, week lead time on getting this equipment, um, ordered and installed and delivered. Oh, I think that's about all I have for, for me, yeah, go ahead, Jack.
Did you ever get a quote or estimate on an actual repair?
Um, nope, we just solved the, we ended up having that Frisbees come out on Saturday, they're the only people who could get there in a decent amount of time. Um, I won't repeat what the gentleman told me about it, but it's not, I won't, but it's not, he said it's, it's beyond repair. The, the compressors are pretty much non-functional inside of them, um, and the unit's just outdated and, and not efficient anymore.
How old is the unit?
Uh, twenty years old, yep.
One, if not two compressors, that, there's multiple compressors in, uh, at least the twenty-sun, if not.
Yep, I, I think he said there was two of them in that one, and both of them were not functioning.
Okay, and they could give you an estimate as to what that would cost?
He didn't think it was even repairable.
Well, if it's not even repairable, replace the compressor.
Right, I don't, I don't think he thought that would make much of a difference. I guess, we could, if, if we don't decide to do this, we could certainly try to do that, but at this point, we've sunk a lot of money into that unit, and we're looking at, at doing it next year anyway.
As the mother of a recent bride, eighty-eight degrees would be really unfortunate, so I'm, I'm happy to vote for it, and I'm really pleased that you're going with a local company, that's great.
Yep, and we did, we asked almost anybody who's, does this work, and this is, this is who is able to come out and get us bids, in a, I think we gave them two and a half weeks, it's kind of our window.
Okay, so what is the lead time between Prairie Suns and Tessiers?
Um, they were both eight to twelve weeks, Tessiers' bid, I think, I don't know if we had the, I sent over a different, um, do we have the one in there? Well, yeah, that one, but I mean, uh, council request form, Tessiers' bid is actually higher, I misread it when I typed my request form. Um, I accidentally read the ten-ton unit one. Prairie Suns is the cheap, is the lowest bid, anyway, and everyone's lead time was, was roughly the same.
I'll make a motion to approve Prairie Suns.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Prairie Suns bid to install air conditioning at the golf course. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion carries. It's a good decision, as Barb said, there's, those special days can be ruined, and you don't ever get them back, so, good, good call. Uh, seasonal staff, is there anything with that, Brian?
Just the, just the two names, Olivia Wallace in the community room and Patrick Musoul for the lounge.
So, Mr. Jack, it's a fact to the, uh, the, uh, base unit. In the past, have we ever done a service contract, uh, to maybe these companies to employ some of these brands?
Uh, yep, so Frisbees installed it, we had a service contract with them until, I was just looking at their date, until about five years ago. I believe we ended that because they weren't actually coming to do the service that they were supposed to, we were just paying them. Cause, so we switched companies on it.
What?
Right, yeah, and that, that was, that predates me, we have, since I've been here, I, we have not had a service contract for that. That's certainly something we can look into.
Yeah, is that an option, you think, with Prairie Suns?
It probably is, I can ask them if we can add a ser, and, and, uh, I think I put in there too, that they're, um, they're willing to kind of do a, a once-over on the whole system and find its inefficiencies, and maybe give us a quote on updating just, uh, the vents and the ducts and all that kind of stuff, too, that would help a lot.
I think that's, I, I think that's a good suggestion, Jack, and certainly mitigates big bills down the road.
No, nothing, nothing's wrong with the system per se, but they're willing to look at it, you know, it's twenty years old, so things have gotten better and more efficient, so they're willing to look at that and, and see if they can give us any ideas on what we can do to, to maybe make it even better.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, is there anything we need to do with the seasonal staff? Have to approve those. Any questions, Olivia Wallace and Patrick Musoul?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion and second to approve the hiring of two workers. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion carries. Parks and Recreation? We have any, anything you want to enlighten us with? Okay, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Uh, we have a request for a disc golf outing. I don't know if you want to explain a little about that?
Sure, we have a disc golf course in Pioneer Park, Michael Gross would like to have a second, he had a golf disc tournament there last year with the proceeds going to charities here in Brandon, so he would like to do that again on July seventeenth from nine to one. Yep.
I might make a motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the use of Pioneer Park for a disc golf tournament. Roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen? Cole? Parliament?
Motion approved. Um, we have a request from, I believe, the, I'm not sure if it's the softball association.
Softball Association.
Uh, for irrigating two of the fields at Aspen. You want to?
Correct, they, they would like to install irrigation equipment on fields B and C, those are the two fields that I think the high school uses. So they would, they would pay for all of the irrigation improvements, all the piping, the heads, et cetera. Uh, we would get the final say on materials. In this agreement, um, they would agree to abide by any water restrictions that we have, as, in, in this agreement, it was assumed that they would be connecting to the municipal water system. However, baseball, softball, and the high school are looking at constructing a well in Aspen Park. So then they wouldn't be subject necessarily to the watering restrictions if they had their own well, so they're going through that process now, reviewing water rights, submitting the application to the state, and then, uh, they'll probably do a test well to make sure that the, they hit a, a good vein of water in the big sewer. So that's where they're at with this, this agreement doesn't have anything to do with the water source, other than they agreed to abide by the water restrictions that they're in place, if they hook up to the system.
So then that wouldn't go against our water permits?
Well, that's, it's something that.
We're working on?
Yeah, we've got plenty of water rights in the big sewer.
We do, okay.
You know, we've got three unused wells down there in Aspen Park now. I did talk to Chris Brown with the Baseball Association about utilizing those wells, they thought at this point, time would be better to just to build one new one, instead of the initial piping cost for those three, as well as the rehab cost.
But this, this, um, MOU is saying that we are the owners, but they're going to be responsible for all the operation and maintenance.
Correct.
So if the well doesn't work out for them, and they tap into the city's water, what kind of usage would we anticipate that they would put on these fields?
I don't know, we could, we could get an estimate.
And then my second question is about those water rights, would it, would it be prudent for us to put a section or a paragraph in here that, that addresses that, or allows us to somehow trump them down the road if that ever becomes an issue? I see this as like, uh, an agreement that's easily renewable, so it's probably going to be one of those things that just gets renewed, 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 maybe it'd be good to be proactive on that?
No, it's, it's all three of them. I'll have to, we'll have to check as far as water rights.
Well, it's certainly a, you know, somewhat of a hot topic right now, and, uh, I'm not sure exactly, until we know a little bit more, where are we at with this, I know Raleigh shared some concerns with us the other night at the briefing.
Yeah, they would, they would like to start July twelfth, I think is, I think is when they would like to start. Um, but if the council doesn't approve it, they would need to wait until, well, we still got one council meeting before then, so.
Well, I mean, in here, it says if they're hooked up to our system, they have to abide by the water, our watering restrictions, so I think we're covered in that respect. If they're able to do the well, that gives them some flexibility, but I think we're, we're covered, so that they could get started.
You know, you, you could also, cause they're going to comply with our watering restrictions, so if the council ever wants to set a policy and a resolution, enact a motion that says no watering at the baseball and softball fields, that's your watering restriction. So, this is contemplating something, you know, broadly, that are general odd even, one day a week, but you can also, later down the road, just say no watering in the baseball, softball, soccer fields. I mean, it's, it's your water to control.
I guess my concern with not knowing the usage is how close we are to that one point six. Cause we've been forty-nine thousand over, eighty-eight thousand over, sixty thousand over, thirty-eight thousand over, I mean, that's not much when you're talking one point six. So I just think it'd be prudent for us to know what we're potentially adding to our usage, if it's going to have an effect on the residents.
And, and the only other thing I'd say about fields, I, I don't know what Randy Marston knows about fields, but I do know there's some issue about playing on really hard surfaces, so you might want to consider finding somebody to say whether or not it's prudent to allow usage of your fields if they're completely dead. So, again, you could enact a motion later to say no watering. You could adopt this, and then further restrict it, cause it doesn't have to be based upon our resolutions for odd and even.
Lisa, correct me, I think I read in there, so even if they start construction, and they mess up anything, or hit some of Raleigh's pipes, or whatever, they're liable for all of that, even if they don't find a, I mean, regardless, if they find, cause it, there, there's a possibility they might not find a place, right, and they might not have a well. Right?
I mean, it's contemplated that they could either use our water, or this, the well water, they have to pay for the hookup to the well water. If they do something when they're doing this project that somehow causes us damages, they're supposed to indemnify, pay for that damage to us, defend us if there's a lawsuit, because something happens.
Just scaling this out on GIS, both outfields, which would be about the only thing that would be irrigated, they're both about twenty-five thousand square feet, so a total of fifty thousand square feet, at about point six gallons per week, so it's about thirty-one thousand gallons, to get equal an inch a week. Professed.
And they're going to start construction July twelfth, that doesn't mean that they're not going to get finished till, you know, I don't know how many days it is to construct it, but it'll be towards the end of summer.
Probably a little more when they first start, because they'll, they're going to regrade it.
Yep.
Pre-seed it and all that, but, but still, that's, like you said, hopefully in the fall, things have eased a bit.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, uh, request from the MOU for irrigating the Brandon Valley softball fields. Roll call.
Clark?
Was there any interest in adding language in there about our water rights? Or is that just me?
I think that's probably a different agreement.
Lisa, did you feel that that was assumed? Which I know can get us in trouble, but.
That we have the ability to control?
Yes, we do.
We have the ability to control, it says in there that they have to abide by our watering restrictions, so if the council wants to adopt something that has a different watering restriction, I think you can later down the road say, for the baseball, softball fields, these are our watering restrictions. It doesn't say for the current watering restrictions that are in effect as of June twenty-first, so if you want to do something later down the road.
We're talking about water rights, not usage.
Yeah, and this agreement is with the softball association, so I would say if you want to do that, then I would do another agreement, because baseball and softball and is looking together for those water rights, so I would say that'd be a separate agreement if you want to do something on that.
And, and so maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, to allow them to use one of the city's water rights to hook up to the well?
Or have an adverse effect on what we're able to use.
That would be another agreement, right, that would have to be another agreement, that we would allow them to have one of our water rights as a city. And so is it assumed, there's nothing that makes us have to do that, we could say no?
Raleigh, do you think this is going to affect us that much, or not really? No.
We don't use a lot of the pieces of water.
How about the overall usage, if they end up using city water?
Then I would say they have to extend it. Similar to what we do with houses.
Well, we have a motion and a second, let's roll call.
Clark? Aye. David? Fish? Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole? Parliament?
Think we lost, Jack. I see the light is no longer green.
Okay. And he hasn't emailed, so he must have dropped off. I don't know, I have this one there.
What do we do in these situations, obviously the motion passes.
Yep.
So. Motion carries to agree, uh, to approve. We have some pool staff to approve.
Uh, yeah, we have one lifeguard, we, we lost one because they picked up, uh, internship over the summer, so, uh, isolated on Megan Ergenit for a lifeguard position.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second to approve the hiring for pool staff, all in favor, roll call.
Clark? David? Fish? Jorgensen?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to public safety. Uh, we have a fire department report, are there any questions? About that? Think there's anything to approve or work on there? Safety Town.
All right, I just want to give you guys a brief rundown of Safety Town, I want to, before we start looking at some of these pictures, thank Keely with the Brandon Valley Journal, um, they're kind of a mix of hers, and then some from my cell phone and Officer Sarda's, but the good ones are hers. Um, but it ran June seventh to the eighteenth, this is the first time that we held this program in Brandon, um, so you can see some of the pictures there of the kids, uh, Chief Stuffel and Officer Sarda painted that town, and, um, they got the buildings up for the kids, and I know the officers helped put seat bol, or seat belts installed on those cars, and little license plates on them, um, for the kids to drive around on our town, so to speak. Um, and then I kind of gave an agenda of what we did every day, uh, you can see the first week, uh, Monday, Officer Sarda came in full uniform and wore, and explained to the kids why he wears what he wears, what he wears, had the police car there. Uh, Tuesday, we had Twyla with a Vera, she came and spoke to us about poison, uh, we also talked about strangers, and, um, you know, who is a stranger, who, you know, what is a stranger, who is a stranger, all that good stuff. And then Wednesday, we talked, uh, we had bike safety, so Officer Hakestrum came and helped, uh, police, you know, Officer Sarda and myself, and he performed like his bike rodeo. Thursday, it was nice, because we had, um, David Moody with the Brandon Valley Transportation with the school, he brought a bus out, and, and then we had a MetStar on Friday, so some of you that are around June eleventh, there's a lot of sirens, because they let the kids push them, it was pretty cute, um, they were having a blast. Um, but it was neat, cause they, as you can see from some of those pictures, they were able to go inside the ambulance and, you know, and then actually see what happens if they go in your home, and it was really informative for these kids to kind of get that hands-on experience. And then our second week, which was last week, um, even though it's not really safety per se, but it was important learning day, it was Flag Day on June fourteenth, so we had Ron. So we had Ron Harris come over from the VFW, a veteran, and talk about the importance of Flag Day and, you know, why we do that. And then we talked a little bit about weather, but it was mainly about water, because later on the week, we were able to have Brian Carstens with Calo Land come and speak to the kids. But on Tuesday, Chief Dikster was there and Assistant Chief was there, and they brought the safe house, and the kids actually got to go through, and the fire alarm went off, the smoke went on. I don't know if anybody has been through that before, seen kids go through that. And they actually showed the children what they would look like in full uniform. Chief Dikster got all dressed up in his full uniform and showed them what it would look like. And then Police Chief was there, Chief Stuffel was there, helping them get out of the safety house too with the smoke and stuff, climb out of there, which I think was really good for them. And then on Wednesday, we actually had the Humane Society come and talk about animal safety and awareness and how you should approach animals you don't know. And Thursday was a review day, and then again, like I said, it worked with Brian's schedule from Calo, and he came out on Thursday and talked about the weather safety. He brought a replica of a hail that fell in South Dakota, so that's what he's holding in that picture that you guys see. It's like an actual size of what it was that fell down in South Dakota, and just the weight and everything, and the kids got to hold that, and they thought that was pretty cool. And then we had our graduation day. So that was really, really fortunate. We had, obviously, Police Chief was there, Lieutenant was there, Dave was there, Hakestrum was there, Brian was there. These little kids just thought it was so fun, they kind of went right down the line, as you can see it, and they graduated there. And then I just wanted to share some of the comments with the, what some of the parents had to say. This is just a few here. Love it, great for our town, thanks for putting this program together, and hope to continue it for youths to come. So I didn't hear anything negative, and I got, there was graduation day, they probably, not all of them could, some of them had to go on vacation or some of them left. So I think we had 23 that day that graduated, but I got 17 parent questionnaires back, so I thought that was pretty good, considering two was myself and Officer Sarda's kids that were in it, so we didn't fill one out. So only four didn't fill it out, so I thought, hey, that was pretty good. And so that's kind of our program, and it's something I hope we can continue doing, and I would, something that I looked into more, like I know Yankton does it, Brookings does it, Dell Rapids, but something to consider. I know this year, I did volunteer my time to, because I really feel strongly, I think this is a great program. But talking with some other communities too, they do, they do pay the teacher. So I would say, going forward, I think as council looks at budget time, I wouldn't mind trying to allocate some funds for that. I know Yankton and Brookings does the same thing. But other than that, everything else, we, mainly, a lot of it, not all of it, I would, we'll see here when the numbers come in, right Christina? But most of it was donations to actually pay for like that banner you see, that, you know, a lot of the T-shirts and stuff like that was local businesses, you know, donating, and then like facilities and their time and, you know, stuff like that to kind of help the program. And the other thing I would probably recommend for next year too is, it was free this year, but we also had a lot of last-minute dropouts the week before. And I feel like with Christina, she was a trooper, she's like, okay, another one, here's, and then we had a wait list, of course, which was great, but I feel like even if we just associated a $20 fee to it, that hopefully it would kind of, you know, defer some of those people last minute dropping out. And then it would help us offset the cost of, they all got a T-shirt on graduation day and they got a, you know, and stuff like that, that would kind of help out with some of those things, but yeah.
Well, first of all, thank you for your putting this together, and you'd started on this before I came on council, but it looks like it was amazing, the comments from the parents and some of the kids. I love how my child is comfortable around the police and firefighters now. Those are, those are programs that don't just last a week, they last a lifetime, and that's, that's a pretty cool deal, so, at it, girl.
Thank you.
I would echo that. I think it's awesome. Vicki, I know a lot of the parents of some of these kids and heard great things as well, so, good job.
Yeah.
It was fun.
And also thank the staff that supported it.
Yeah, we had, it was wonderful, because Officer Sarda and I, we were there every day, and we had to find youth volunteers, and we know how busy our youth is, right? So some days, some couldn't be there, but that was okay. But overall, there's just one in there that's not Jackie. She had to go on a camp, otherwise, these kids came every day and volunteered their time, and it was really nice that they, even for them to be like, what? What do you want to do? What am I going to suppose to volunteer for? So they came and volunteered their time, which was really nice too, like you said, these youth volunteers, and they kind of helped us, I like to say more crowd management. So they would break the group up into two, and so I at least had three youth instructors with me, and Sarda had the same thing, so we could kind of better manage the kids and keep an eye on them. And then there's a great opportunity to practice their phone numbers more on a one-on-one basis compared to me having 15 kids, trying to practice it with them, so. And I do have to say too, Keely was there way more than she had to be, so thank you to the Brandon Valley Journal. She was out there more, and that was awesome, because we kind of want to capture everything, and a lot of times I'm like, I didn't take a picture! Oh, don't worry, Keely did. Phew, right? You know, so it was really nice, because you just get caught up in the moment and you want to document this, because we haven't had this before, just so people kind of get a better understanding what it was, so, yeah, it was great.
Well, thank you. Very well done.
Thank you.
Moving on, MedStar report. I see that's from January through May. I don't know, Brian, if there's anything there.
No, it's a new format that MedStar developed, it's a little easier to read. They did provide an explanation for the runtimes that were, or the response times that were longer than anticipated or required, but all of the average response times were well within the 8:59, 8 minutes 59 seconds. And our, just to, since the mayor wasn't here, our response time is different than Sioux Falls. Sioux Falls is when they call in and say they're on their way. Our response time is defined from the time the call is received to the time they are on scene.
Any questions or comments there? Okay, moving on, we have a request from Bethany Meadows to, I know they did this, I know a couple of years ago, to have a fireworks display. And I think you can read, they've talked to Brandon Fire Department about being present at the display and agreed to have a crew attend on July 6th.
Yep, and Fire Department has final say on whether or not they do their show.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Bethany Meadows fireworks, I believe on July 6th. Roll call, all?
We do not need to do roll call anymore, so you can go ahead with...
Oh, we don't have you.
Roll, yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, it's one way to get rid of Jack, yes. Cut that phone line off a little bit. Okay. Bids for the sale of a 2016 Ford Explorer.
We received five bid, the highest bid was submitted by Bay Ridge Motors, Inc., for $4,656.
Sounds like a reasonable bid.
It's quite a bit higher than normal.
Yeah.
Put it that way.
Motion to sell to Bay Ridge.
Second.
The motion, second, to sell the excess property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six is designate no parking on 7th Street. Do you want to explain that a little bit? Now we talked...
Sure. Total Fire, who has a business on the east side of 6 between Ash and Birch, has a difficult time getting deliveries of semis into their facility with parking on both sides of the street. They've requested that we have no parking on the east side. Both the city engineer and the, and the police chief verified and recommend that we declare parking on the east side of 7th Street North from Birch to Ash is no parking zone.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the no parking on 7th Avenue North. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a request for fireworks permit for Hewsetts Speedway.
Something new this year, Hewsetts is out in the county, so they've never required a permit from us. This is part of the county permitting process. They're within a mile of our city limits, so they would like the city to sign off on the fireworks show, and that would be on tomorrow, 6:22.
Brian, did you talk to anybody about the county? Is this actually one of their forms or no?
Yep. We got it from the county.
Okay.
So Brian, if I remember right, was it on several occasions that they were going to request? Or is this just for this one?
Just for June 22nd. Now, they have different times in there, 7:30, 10:30, 11:00.
10:30 and 11:00? What did that mean? Maybe that was what I was...
That I, I don't know.
Probably between eights or something.
Could be. Probably did...
Well, they wouldn't shoot...
Hot laps usually start about 6:00, 6:30, so probably before they start the races, that would be the 7:30.
Okay.
And then 10:30, probably before the A feature.
And then after it...
And they've usually been getting their races done 10:30, 10:45.
They're running on a Tuesday.
Yeah, this is part of their promotion with Jackson Nationals. Jackson Nationals is Wednesday, Thursday, or Thursday, Friday, Saturday of this week. He's starting shows, their normal race was last night, and then in conjunction with the Jackson Nationals, they're having races tonight and tomorrow. So they're trying to keep the racers in the area, is what they're doing.
You say it's how people pour and interact?
Yep.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Does the county board would?
Yep.
I'd make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request from Hewsetts for fireworks tomorrow. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request for a block party, 2400 Trevino Lane.
All of the required signatures have been submitted with the application.
One block from Country Club to Chestnut.
And we require all, all property owners that are affected with access to their property to sign off on the application, and they have.
I see they all have, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the block party. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resignation of Jim Starzel from planning and zoning? Do we need to do something with that?
Yeah, approve his resignation. Jim has indicated that he will stay on P&amp;Z until a replacement, looking at potentially the July 19th regular city council meeting to appoint a replacement for him.
Motion to accept his resignation.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the resignation of Jim and thank him for his service. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And just real quick, the process for anybody that may be interested in applying?
We've got expression of interest forms, they can get those off the website or pick them up at the city hall. Turn them in, I think I've got July night, which is a Friday, and then that would give folks, you know, a week or two to review.
Next on the agenda is an off-sale liquor license discussion.
With the anticipated date of the census numbers being released, it's sometime this fall, we are anticipating that we will pick up both an on-sale and an off-sale liquor license. Currently, we have two on-sale licenses available, we don't have any off-sale licenses available. So some things that the city council needs to start thinking about is, A, do we want to, do we want to continue to charge this renewal fee for an off-sale license, which is 500 bucks? You know, do we want to, how are we going to, we are anticipating, since we've had four inquiries regarding an off-sale license, how does the council want to handle the issuance of that license? You know, do you want to first come, first served? Do you want it to, some communities do auctions, where they auction that license off with a minimum bid? So it's just some things we need to start thinking about, so that we have them in place by the time the census numbers come out. And then we've got an off-sale license at the golf course, and what do we want to do with that? Our on-sale license covers the entire course, so wouldn't necessarily be necessary out of the course. And I haven't talked to Andrew, so, but the beverage, the beverage cart is considered on-sale.
Before you start talking about auctioning, I guess I'd want to take a look at it, because that can be considered a revenue-producing, which could be considered taxation as opposed to licensing, so it wasn't something I've looked at and considered, I just am aware of the issue. So before we get excited about auctioning it off and making a bunch of money, I want to look at it, so that it doesn't become a taxation that you can't have for a license fee. So I, so I would take a look at it. It wasn't keyed into this issue, and I just saw that...
No decisions needed tonight, just something to start thinking about. We'll probably have it on another agenda item maybe late July. We're anticipating the census numbers coming out hopefully in September, so that would give us enough time to put any ordinances in place that we need to.
Brian, is there an option other than, like, I thought you said you could, maybe we'll say auction, or first come, first served, or is there one where we just say we have possibly two available and then just accept applications? Or, and then we, then we just decide or no?
Well, maybe. Was that for answering?
Yeah, I just said...
Seal bits or what?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't...
No, like...
It would be nice to have some criteria, if you get four applications for two licenses, how are you going to judge which one is in the best interest of the city?
Right.
You know, and let's take a look at it, which one is going to generate more sales tax revenue for us?
Yeah.
Don't know. You know, the state is very vague on their licensing requirements. I think it references good, if the person is in good standing or a good reputation. Well, how do you judge that?
Yeah.
So those are some things that we need to explore, you know, if we can set up criteria for that, or the whole auction concept, or if it's a first come, first served, what, do you want to establish something more than 500 bucks?
Yeah, do you want to set a different minimum at least, and then...
Sure. Because our on-sale license is $6 per capita, based upon the last census. So, you know, do you want to do something that's not just order number up, $2 per capita or $3 per capita?
Well, I certainly, I, my opinion would be, the first come, first served would be the last choice I'd have. I think you want to be fair to anyone that has interest. This is free enterprise, and...
So if you have any other ideas, let us know, but in the meantime, we'll, we'll get together and start looking at some of these ideas.
I'm curious as to why the golf course would have a, I mean, no offense, almost, I would say we don't want an off-sale.
I, I don't know.
Why we have an off-sale?
Yeah, what is that for?
In order to take any beer off-site, you have to have an off-sale. So if somebody comes into the lounge and they get a six-pack and then they golf and they don't consume all of that six-pack...
Okay.
If you only have an on-sale, they can't take it off the horse.
Oh, okay.
So that's the reason why.
Fortunately, most of the guys I golf with, that isn't a problem.
For beer and wine, isn't there a different one, or...
Yeah, beer is, malt beverage is what it's called, and those are...
Malt beverage, yeah.
Yeah.
Off-sale, so...
It's different.
There is no...
There's no limit.
Maximum limits on those.
I, I understand now, that makes some sense, I can see where it would probably come up some, but I don't...
Yeah, and I haven't talked to Carrie either, and how much, and I don't even know if she knows how often that happens, but it can be a discussion we have with the golf course.
Here's another idea for revenue. Andrew, put in little cooler lockers, and then you can charge them, you know what I'm saying? Keep your extra beverages here, we'll keep them cool, see?
Thank you.
We have a questionnaire for the on-sale license. Maybe we can piggyback on that.
Okay.
Any other discussion on, on the off-sale liquor license? Anything else? Anyone else?
It'll be back in the future.
Okay. Item four is request for Street Dance, September 11th, at the Double D.
Same agreement as last time. Same agreement as last time. There is only one change. They have requested to extend the time to eleven P.M. They are present, so if you have any questions for them, you certainly ask.
Welcome.
Any questions?
How late did you run it last?
We've been doing it to ten o'clock. We just had a lot of, actually, people, citizens in the community, ask if we would approach you guys since we've had two events that have proved well. And so we thought we'd do our due diligence and ask since we've had requests.
We have not had any...we had one noise complaint on the first one. That was when the band was warming up. So it's never been at closing time. We had no complaints that I know of at the last event. So, you know, if the council wanted to go till eleven, if we get a bunch of complaints at ten-thirty, then next time, we take a look and say, let's pack it up at ten. So we haven't had any complaints in the past with the two previous Street Dance.
Do you want to go and see what happens? I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the extended...approve the Street Dance plus extending the hours till eleven? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It should be fun. Okay, Streets, Street Report. Anything there that... Has to be, okay. Rushmore Project Change Order.
This is a deduction to the original contract price. This change order saves us a little over twelve thousand dollars. And all it does is we swapped out a manhole for a clean-out.
Well, we like those.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the Rushmore Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a Rushmore Project pay application?
Yep, this is a second pay application for the Rushmore Area Project at three hundred and twenty-five thousand forty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. The project is a little bit behind, but they do have some plans for how they're going to catch up.
I was just going to ask you, how's it coming?
Yeah, overall, they're doing a good job.
I go to a Bible study there on Thursday mornings and it's adventurous.
Yes.
But as long as it's dry, it's not so bad.
Tammy, I did have a call from somebody that the one that trucks blocked the street for hours. They had big culvers on it. Did they ever get ahold of you? Anybody else get that call? And they just couldn't get out of there. The construction company did. And I didn't know, we have that other road, can they not go on that one instead of on Cedar? And block them in.
I can talk to the contractors and see.
Yeah, they said it was on Friday afternoon and it was blocked. Did you get that one, Brian? No. Yeah, I just had someone call me and it was after five and I...but yeah. They just blocked it for them. And then they had to go on the old grass to get out of there. And so I'm like, yeah.
On Cedar?
On Cedar. And it was one that he named the truck. I'm not very good at it. But it must have been a big one. He goes, it shouldn't have been driving on those streets anyways. I know we're going to, supposed to have...he goes, but that much weight. He said he drove truck and he's like, with that much weight, it shouldn't have been on that street anyways.
They can go on any street they want to as long as they're made to deliver.
Okay, so maybe that's what it is. But yeah, he said it was really heavy and then they had these big culvers they were trying to get out. But he goes, we were blocked for hours and I finally just went on my grass to try to get out of there.
I will say that the residents that I have spoken with, which there's about six gentlemen, are very pleased with the cooperation that the construction company, in fact, they've just taken donuts and everything and just tell them...
They're getting pretty spoiled out there, I think.
You always want to keep the construction company...
Yeah, I guess so. Well, they have...they've done well.
Motion to approve the pay...second.
Motion and a second to approve the Rushmore Project pay application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have a bill for dust control on Redwood and Chestnut.
Yeah, historically, Brandon Township has come in and we've participated in the last couple of years paying for the dust control applied to Chestnut and Redwood since we have a large number of community residents that are driving on those streets. This year, they didn't come in because I think they...we'd already talked to them about maintaining Redwood and Chestnut during the water tower construction project. So I think they just kind of assumed that that's part of it. So we recommend paying the invoice.
Speaking of that area, when is that annexation study due back in?
This fall. Yep.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the dust control that was applied. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water and Sewer, the Water Tower Project Pay Application.
This is pay application number two for the water tower at just under four hundred and eighteen thousand. A lot of this work is for the foundation.
How is that project coming?
Very well. They passed all their tests. And they're just moving forward with it.
I see a new water tower going in by T. Right on I twenty-nine. Is that about the same size as the one we're going to have?
If it's the same one, I'm thinking ours is much larger than that. Much larger.
Well, that one's big, so...
I think that one's no more than a half a million gallons.
Yeah. Probably pretty close to half a million.
Yeah, it's maybe twice, more than twice.
Why, that's a big...
Is that a MCWC one or Lewis and Clark? Do you know?
I don't know.
Probably why those footings are seventy-five or eighty feet down into the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Impressive. Okay. Motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the pay application for the Water Tower Project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Usage Update.
I handed out a usage for the last four days, added that in. Unfortunately, we exceeded on Friday the one point six million trigger. Couple of things, I know Raleigh's been fairly busy taking complaints and tracking down water or folks that are watering outside of their designated times and dates. We included a copy of the resolution setting our water conservation program watering restriction program. I included a page from the A two S water rate study that indicated at that point in time, which was in two thousand... or when they evaluated two thousand and eighteen. So it may have changed a little bit. But thirty-two percent of the folks use fifty-eight percent of the water in the summer. So the vast majority of folks aren't using the majority of water when it comes to this. Should back up to that first page. If you look at average daily winter consumption, January through March, it's about seven hundred thousand gallons a day. We peaked at one point eight million. So that equates to a little over one point one million gallons of water. Now, I can't say it all went on lawns, but I would venture, yes, the vast majority of it did. You know, there may be an increase in washing as people sweat a little bit more in this heat. But certainly, over a million gallons went on lawns. So that's what triggered the yellow designation. Couple of things this week is Water Meter Reading Week. So we started agreeing those today.
Right on Friday?
Right on Friday. So bills will be going out soon. You know, we will take a look at some of that data that we collected with the water meters. We can narrow down those property owners that seem to have dramatically increased their water consumption from what their normal usage is.
What if I filled a pool?
That would just kind of be a one...
Is that going to hit against people? Like, I did fill a pool in June.
How big of a pool?
Um, I don't know.
Like a baby waiting pool?
No, like a bigger pool. It's above ground, I don't know.
You know, we...with some of the newer meters, we can track usage.
Okay.
On an hourly basis.
So you can just see that?
So we, you know, if it's a one-time blip that somebody's filling a pool...
Then you see that, okay.
We can see that. The other thing I think that will really help with water conservation is the tiered system. A lot of those folks haven't seen that yet, unfortunately. So when they get their bill in another week or so, some of those will be moving into the third, maybe even the fourth tier, depending on how much they're using. And if you remember, there's quite a hefty fee increase from the first tier up to the third and fourth tiers. So I think that will probably have more impact on water consumption than anything else.
So do you think that we need to revisit that? Well, a couple of things on this. The one point six million, do we need to revisit that as our population grows? And the second thing is, you know, we have three days and then the ten days to me seems excessively long to drop before we drop back into the odd even. I'd like to standardize that a little bit.
Which makes sense. The three days at one point six, it's tough, especially on weekends, and that's when this happened, is to get the word out that, hey, we're approaching our trigger point. So it might make sense to extend that out to maybe five days to give us a little more time to get the word out.
And then drop the other one down to five.
And then drop the other one down and maybe match it. You know, we currently use approximately nine forms of communication with our residents. The easiest one or the most efficient one for something like this is textedly. So if people would sign up for texted messages, they would get those immediately instead of taking their time and effort to check our Facebook page or whatever else. So the information is out there. We mailed it to every household or every account in April. It's also in the Chamber Magazine, all of the guidelines, the green, yellow, red water restrictions and the triggers. So extending that period might help. The other thing that we could consider, you know, we do have well number three, which we try not to use because it doesn't go through the filtration plan. It meets all EPA guidelines. It just has high iron and manganese. We do chlorinate it. It's very low in radium and radionuclides. So the problem with using well number three is it does create some discoloration in our water system. It adds the iron and manganese that we don't...that isn't filtered out as well as it messes with the flow of the water in the system. And it disturbs the debris that's in the pipes. So we could take a look at a higher trigger point. You know, say if we hit one-five or one-six, we would automatically turn on well three. We would send out an advisory that due to high water consumption or high water usage, lawn watering, we will be turning on well number three. Please be aware that it may cause a discoloration in your water. So...
I don't know that I want to put up with that. I mean, the complaints will be...
Aye.
But could we potentially go to one point eight and still run it through the plant and not kill ourselves? If we do it for five days?
Raleigh's getting nervous.
I'm just asking. I'd like to raise it a little bit, but I don't want to be wild and crazy either, all. You're the expert, not me.
And I have similar questions too. I know when we set these triggers and resolutions, it was before my time, but I recall sitting in the audience for several of them. And a big part of the equation was we didn't have redundancy with well eight. And so that was part of why these were set where they were, which of course now we're in a much better spot. But I don't know what the plant can handle, so I'm interested to know that too.
The plant still handles the same amount. Well, eight just produces the same amount of water as well six did. It's just that it's a newer well. Now we have the redundancy. So if well eight would go down, then we can go to well six. But you're not going to put any more through the plant. So once the plant expansion happens, you might be able to jump that number up because you'll be able to produce more water. We'll also have a water tower that'll hold a lot more water. But yeah, until then, I would say that the one point six is a safe number. The town's growing a little bit more too, every day. I've given out, well, I've had fifty exceptions come through. And out of the fifty, ten of them were only denied because they're trying to do overseeding. And I've caught some of those people still watering. So I've given out thirty-three notices. Out of the thirty-three, only one's been a first violation. Most of the people either filed for an exception because they had sod on their yard and it's not a good time of the year to be planting sod, so...
Are you okay if we would go to the five and five? How do you feel about that? That ten days is long.
Honestly, I'd love to get rid of yellow. Just have a green and a red because right now I have to give out five notices before they get their water shut off. So that means I have to catch them five times. And out of thirty-three notices that I've given out that I have caught and as Brian stated, I spend an hour and a half to two hours every morning driving the neighborhoods and catching people that are watering out of compliance.
As far as violations? Yeah, we could. We could certainly do that.
Five strikes, you're out.
True. Yeah, you could go to, you know, the first one is a courtesy, just in case the folks don't know. Second one, you know, is a hundred bucks. The third one, you know, typically in baseball, it's three strikes, you're out. So we could go, you know, a courtesy, another violation, and then, you know, three might be too much. Five is too long, I think. You know, and yellow is confusing. It does take, I think, some folks to pay attention to. Hey, what's the last number of my address? And then what day is it? So that's a little confusing to folks. So I would anticipate if we went to yellow, yeah, it's going to take a while to taper down. I would get that. If we wanted to extend the green, either increase the consumption and/or increase the number of days, I wouldn't be opposed to skipping the yellow too. Because like I said, it's confusing.
Well, you know, this was our first go at this. And it's been four years. I think people are getting a little bit more comfortable with it. But maybe we could simplify it a bit and loosen it up a bit.
So that's kind of where we're at. Those are kind of our options until the new treatment plan is up and running. We've got well number three, which is the backup. If after people get their water bills into that third and fourth tier, if they're still using excess water and still getting over that one-six trigger, even up around one-eight, we're going to have to consider, seriously consider using well number three. And I know that there's some conversation out in the community that, you know, what the heck's the city doing? City's been on this course since two thousand and fourteen. We did a water system study in two thousand and thirteen that pinpointed some priorities. Number one priority was redundancy in the wells. So that was the construction of wells seven and eight. The second priority was elevated storage. Because we are woefully undersized on elevated storage. We've got about twenty-five percent of what, well, not even twenty-five percent of what we should have. And third was the expansion of the water treatment plant. So in two thousand and seventeen, we had opened bids on the construction of well number eight. And that was delayed for two years at the request of citizens. We also formed a water advisory committee because citizens wanted a voice in the process. We also retained an engineering firm to review our water system again. It took a year and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to confirm what the original two thousand and fourteen study said. So we're on the same path that we were on originally. We're just approximately two years behind. If we'd stayed on the original course, that water treatment plant would be up and running the end of this year, twenty-twenty-two at the latest. Because we would have been under construction a year and a half ago. So yeah, we're behind. We're asking the citizens to please be patient and observe the watering restrictions. Theoretically, there's plenty of margin for error in this calculation. But, you know, if we use seven hundred thousand gallons January through March, that's our normal domestic in-house consumption. So if we're using one point one million gallons at the peak, that's going on outside usage. If people, theoretically, half of our addresses are even, half are odd. And that may be off a little bit, but it's close. And that's five hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day. You add that five hundred and eighty thousand gallons a day to our seven hundred thousand normal domestic consumption, that comes out to about one point three million gallons a day. So that tells me that there's a half a million gallons or up to a half a million gallons a day that's being used that shouldn't be used.
So, water conservation was in Sunshine, uh, trying to again educate the folks about it, and that committee is terrific. Those are all volunteers. They take their time to do that, and I really appreciate that. I I personally find it rather offensive that we are dumping a million gallons of water on grass. Um, so, I I'm hoping that the citizens will kind of cut that back, and it's a non-renewable resource. I mean, we're just using it.
We we hope so too. You know, last year, which was also a very, very dry year, wonderful for construction, if everybody remembers, very dry. We never hit the one point six trigger all of last year, and here we are in the first half of June, and we already hit it. So, yes, it's been warmer than last year, I think, and quicker. So, there's, there's that, and and people are expecting their yards to green up and stay green at least through June. I get that. But I I think, a couple of things, if if the residents would A adhere to the even odd watering, you only need a gallon or a one inch per square or one inch of water per week. So, in my quick calculation, that's about point six two gallons per square foot. So, it's fairly easy. We've got, we've got uh rain gauges or irrigation gauges free, if anybody wants them, that you can figure out how much water you're putting on in your zones, on your sprinklers, so that you're only getting that one inch. Because most of the folks that call in and say, "What's going on?" We ask, "How much water are you putting on?" "Well, it's twenty minutes or ten minutes." "No, how many gallons?" Don't know. It's timed, because they've got an irrigation company that comes in and sets it, takes a look at it. They don't measure the gallons on it. So, if they would look at that and come down to pick up a rain gauge, irrigation gauge, that would help. Um, like I said, hopefully, the the water treatment plant's under under design now.
What is the timetable on that?
Timetable on that is basically a year to design, so we would be looking at bidding it next summer, spring, summer, and then about eighteen months, twenty-four months to construct, hopefully eighteen. So, we'd be looking at, you know, end of twenty twenty-four for operation.
And the water tower is September next year?
If all goes well.
Yeah.
I know. Just, I was throwing that out there, weather dependent.
Like that attitude, that's good. Well, I sort of-
Can I, one more comment?
Go ahead.
Uh, I was, I was just gonna ask. I would like to see us bring the resolution back at the next meeting with a couple modifications, and I agree with both what Barb and Brian said, and combining the two, lightening up the time in the penalty box, so to speak, but strengthening the penalty. Um, I think that that would kind of be a way to have a compromise and and get this a little bit more current.
So, do you have like a recommendation so that we can, when we publish it? I mean, are you talking about the offenses are increased amounts, less before we turn it off? You know, right now we have warning, which is appropriate, second offense, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred, turn it off. Do you want to do second offenses, three hundred? I mean, is there something you guys want to do? Because I think it's better to kind of tell the public, we're looking at this resolution and be a little more concrete, which we can change the amounts, but at least a little more-
I I like the first times a warning and then three strikes, you're out, so four total, and then beef them up, maybe like one hundred, two fifty, and- We could start there and have discussion, I guess.
And then a five and a five?
Yeah, yeah.
The five and five thing, okay. That helps.
So, who gives out these fines?
They go on the water bill.
They just go on the water bill? Okay, so-
It's a surcharge.
The the warning is given, but we issue it, and then the money comes off of it.
Yeah, we we tack onto their water bill as a surcharge.
Okay.
Does their warning start over every year? Or like if you had somebody last year that you warned, and now they're doing it this year, it's now a fine? You're starting over with another warning?
I start over every year.
It says, yeah, it says in every calendar year that's how it was-
There are a few that are repeat offenders. Um, they, I've had people tell me straight out, "Well, if it's only a hundred dollar fine, I'm just watering my yard."
Right.
"It's gonna take you three tries before I get a hundred dollar fine, so I don't care." And they do, so.
If you want to do every two years, whatever, we can change it however you want, but.
And that's, you know, the the this, "Hey, I'm willing to pay the hundred dollar surcharge" isn't uncommon. I I know when the individual from Sioux Falls came over, he's had those conversations with Sioux Falls residents as well. "What's it gonna cost me?" "Well, here, you know, I'll pay you." Um, and just for information, we are not the only community in Mi'aa County that has water restrictions. Sioux Falls and and Harrisburg, I know do. They've had it for a number of years. We stole this from Sioux Falls. Um, and I had a conversation with um MCWC last week. They are not currently under water restrictions, but they are considering implementing their first ever water restrictions.
I went to the mayor's, uh, Lincoln and Mi'ahah County, and that discussion came up, and this is ten days ago, and most of them were moving in that direction. So, it's, we're not the only one.
Raleigh, how would that work for you if it were two years instead of one year? I mean, I think it's kind of rotten. If somebody knows they've been told, I don't think they should get a free pass every year. I'm not sure how to not make that a nightmare for you.
Yeah, I'd, it would be easier in a sense that if they've already had a strike against them before, I can make less trips there, but you also reach that turning their water off sooner, which I think might be a legal battle. But once you shut somebody's water off and they got three kids in the house, and now I can't bathe them, I can't cook, clean, shower, I think that could could be, uh, become a legal battle. Um, just one comment I want to make, or two comments. Using well three, we're not required by the state right now to test that on a normal basis. If we start using that well for more than, I think it's seven days or fourteen days out of the month, if we start using it more than fourteen days out of the month, we have to start testing that also. Then, on a regular basis, not, not as a, an emergency well. Um, the other thing I've noticed that you asked a question about running higher numbers. Well, if you look at the hours, you guys probably don't have it with you, but the hours that it takes to run that wa- uh, well eight and the water treatment plant, we're running fifteen hours out of the day. That's not giving the the plant a lot of time to do the back washes and keep up with the production then, too. You don't want to run twenty-four hours a day, and we've pushed close to that a couple of times, so that's why I I'm a little leery of running it too much more, so.
How much, how much will it, how much will it produce in fifteen hours?
Well, is that what you said it's running right now? Um, well, the day that we ran, let's see, one point eight, yeah. Eighteen hours, roughly.
Fifteen hours.
So, do you, you get down to some pretty low levels of water that are left?
No, we've had one day where the water tower was down to ten feet. Um, that was back on, I got my wrong days here. I want to say that was June, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eighth, June eighth, down to ten point three feet.
Well, I guess I'm more interested in changing the days, going the five to five, but I do think that we need to consider looking at bumping that up by a little bit just because we have more population. You know, we're gonna have to go with that. Now, if we've got to wait four years before the plant is ready to go, I don't, I'm not sure we can stay at that one point six million. We may have to reconsider that next year, go to one point seven. I'm not saying two million at all, Raleigh, maybe one seven. I'm just trying to, you know, find a little middle ground.
We'll, we'll, we'll take one.
But I'll defer to you.
And the new water tower will help the situation.
Yes, it will, but we're still gonna be kind of streamlined where-
How much you can-
The well is only gonna produce so much to go through the plant at one time-
Right.
And then it still has to fill that tower. Um, the big thing I have too with the tower we have now with two hundred and fifty thousand gallons and only five hundred thousand gallons in the water treatment plant's reservoir, we're turning that over almost two and a half times in a day. Five hundred thousand in-ground storage, two hundred and fifty thousand above ground. So, if we have seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water storage and we're using one point eight million, that's a lot of water to produce in a day.
So, I have a question. Last year, we didn't even have fifty homes, right? Or how many did we have new built last year?
We do about forty, forty-five homes.
So, but the point is, if we never even touched it or came close to last year, but this year we're exceeding it. I know we're growing, but I don't think those forty, fifty, it it's making that much of an impact. So, it has to be somewhere with education or people just, like you said, maybe it is the weather that's just really hot?
The weather, the weather has a lot to do with it. Uh, one of those charts on, in the packet shows weather and water consumption, or temperature and water consumption, and it is correlated, um, most definitely.
So, it's probably, I was just saying, that one point six is probably, it might be fine, then because we're not growing that much, where they're taking up that much, it might just be more of a education.
Correct. So, you know, I s- I still think that the the biggest impact that's gonna happen on conservation should come out, or should happen this week with water bills.
Yeah, you're right.
I do too. I was thinking the same thing when you said it. There's-
I'm, I'm pretty sure that our phone will be busy.
Soon as they go out, they'll be busy.
There's, yeah.
Have any idea how many people bumped into that third tier?
We don't know yet, but that's a couple of things that we're planning on doing as staff, is reviewing and seeing if we can figure out who has dramatically increased their water consumption over previous months, and that will do a couple of things. One, it will give staff kind of a, a list of potential offenders that we can keep track of a little more closely than just randomly driving around town, uh, hopefully catching somebody or or somebody complaining about their neighbor, because we're starting to see a pickup of of those. So, it would, it will give us an idea of who's doing it and when they're doing it. So, you know, if somebody's turning on their their sprinklers at three o'clock or four o'clock in the morning, the police department is out and about looking, but at the same time, they've got other things that they're doing as well.
Well, thank you, Raleigh, for what you're doing with that. It's very appreciated.
I will say Donovan looked it up. We've already used one point one nine seven million gallons as of the council meeting tonight, so, one point two.
The one thing that we're noticing with the one day a week, people are are irrigating in the, in the, in the morning before ten, and then they're doing it again when they come home at night. So, they're doubling up. So, you would think that we would see a twenty percent reduction in, or a down to a twenty percent reduction in irrigation. We're not, because they're doubling up on it, so.
Well, I have a zero number. Raleigh, I'm gonna go home and water maybe tonight, so, just so you know, but right now I'm thinking maybe I better not.
So.
I've been called some pretty bad names, like, "Be in the water tower."
Thank you, thank you, Raleigh, and thank you for the report. Uh, moving on, any new business, Brian?
No new business, but we do need to have an executive session for personnel.
Entertain a motion. Do we need a motion to move into?
Yes.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks, for coming.